All right. I think we're all here, except for Councilman White, who will excuse him tonight, but it is 5:30. We'll go ahead and call this meeting with a word. I'd like to welcome everybody that's visiting with us and grateful you're here. To begin, we've asked Councilman Baird to begin with a word of prayer, and then Lieutenant Tucker, if you will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I already have my father regretted for this day and the opportunity we have to meet as a council with members of the community present. We're grateful for this wonderful city and for the opportunities that it offers to us and the privileges and rights that we enjoy in this free country. We ask Zeke to please bless us during this meeting that thy spirit be with us and we can make the decisions that are in harmony with thy will for this community and in harmony with the desires of the community. We pray for those who are serving in our country and our communities in uniform, that they'll continue to serve with, that they'll be protected and kept safe and that they'll be able to fill of the support of those who support them. We pray for these things and you, thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Let me pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have our meeting minutes from the last two meetings. So just to give a little context, the regular meeting that we held on the 19th, but then on the 21st, we had a meeting to discuss the ZAP tax renewal. And so that was something that was presented in that meeting. And I just wanted to mention that really quickly. I'll see Zeke here. Okay, basically what the ZAP tax is, is a sales tax that's added on that we can collect with the city for zoos, arts, and parks. And so the council decided to move forward with putting that on the ballot this year to see if it could get renewed and we could continue to utilize those funds for those things. So that's what the August 21st meeting was. With that, are there any amendments or corrections to either of those meeting minutes?
Mayor, I didn't see any side move. We approve all agenda meetings in minutes.
And I'll second that.
Motion to approve by Councilman Boozmark and seconded by Councilman, oh, I almost talked to Audrey, but that's not good reach. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next item is the public comment period. Anyone from the public can come and address the council for up to three minutes. Are there any in the audience that would like to do that this time? Please.
Hi, yes, thank you. My name's Kelsey Carter. I'm representing SM Energy here tonight. Appreciate the opportunity to just give you some information. And that's all I'm doing. SM Energy, new to the area here for the beginning of the year. Bought XCL and Altamont Energy, rolled it all together, now SM. Our office is just across the street here. And we realize and are aware of our activity and what's going on in and around the community and want to extend an olive branch to the city of Roosevelt as we are encroaching and becoming close to this community and to the city as a whole. Want to work hand in hand with you guys as we plan and develop around the city. There are some plans for development that are going to get a little closer. And so things are going to heat up in terms of public comment and public nervousness. And we plan to address those and to take care of them as we move forward. One such case that we are ready to present real loud. And after this meeting, I'm headed over to Ballard's planning its own need to make them aware of it as well. But, and I realize I only have three minutes, but I do want to leave this with you all. This is just, and sorry, I'm a little, I believe the Duchesne County, Uen County line is real close to here. So that's why I'm coming to Roosevelt City and Ballard because it will involve both cities. But we do, we are working with the landowners in this particular area just east of Centennial Elementary School. And so the white block there is a very tentative proposal. It's nothing's common creed, nothing has been, nothing has been signed by anybody. But in discussing with the landowners, we felt like it would be good to get this in front of all the stakeholders and municipalities and entities who will feel that pressure. I had a conversation with Superintendent Jason Young on Friday, making him aware of it as well as it's closing in on proximity to both Union High School to the north and Centennial to the west. That is one that we are ready to make you aware of, and there will be others, so.
And is this putting an oil well location? What are you?
That's correct. I'm sorry, yes, that's an oil well pad proposal for location, yes, ma'am.
Great. Well, appreciate you coming and letting us know and giving us a heads up on your, you know, on what you plan to do there and.
Yep, and that's all this is, is just to let you guys know who we are, what we're here to do, and don't want to make your guys' lives harder. The city as a whole, you know, it's hard. It's a hard thing. But in the interest of all the stakeholders, mineral owners included, this is the area in which we live in, so. But happy to help with all that comes with this and let you guys know that we're here to work with you.
Do we have a city code on oil well locations?
In the residential zones, yes.
Yeah.
This isn't going to count here.
I know, but I'm just wondering for our future, just what.
And I do, I have come in a couple of times and have been given maps for what those zones are and have made our team aware of them. So those are all very well taken into account when this plan is in discussion.
Great. Well, Kelsey, it's good to see you again. Thanks for coming and letting us know that's happening here. And appreciate you being here tonight.
Awesome. Thank you, guys, for having me.
All right, is there anyone else?
Matt Lewis. I want to say thanks to Kirby for getting the sidewalk done. That was really awesome. Not Kirby among the guys, the sidewalk that I asked for or that I spoke about a few years ago in front of the Opener Shop. He got that done and that's awesome. That's great. I worked with Sawyer recently in the water department. Awesome. He was really helpful. I have a smart house and I'm looking to try and make smarter. And one of my issues is reading the water meters that you guys have. I want to be able to get real-time data off that so I can see if there's a leak or whatnot. The water meters that you use are not readable by the public. They make some devices. One device reads about 95% of those meters, you're within the 5%. Tried with an SDR, software-powered radio, I can read my gas meter, no problem. I can't read your stuff. So I'm looking to do that. It was my personal project, but this was last week. This weekend, I ran into a friend that approached me because he knows the kind of city council meetings. Kind of local. He got hit with a bill, water bill, that was four times his normal rate. Because he had a leak. He was approached by somebody else that knew of the issue and they told him to go to the city. The city will work with them and sometimes write that bill off. He went to the city and got a lot of bad communication. It wasn't a pleasant experience for him and I don't believe he wants to return to talk to anybody at the city, which is bad. I want, you know, all of the employees here to be approachable. I've never had an issue with anybody that I spoke with, but he had that experience. Talked to Josh today, had a meeting with him about the situation and whatnot. He says, hard line, city can't do anything. City Council, for some reason, has the ability to work with people. So does somebody have to come here for their water billing, beg for your help? And how do you approve that? Or how do you deny that?
Normally, we would refer to our city staff. And it just depends on, really what it comes down to is if it was our, if it was something that was caused by Roosevelt City or on our end of the things, then yeah, we would be happy to do that.
We understand.
Once it goes past the meter and, you know, you have different installers or contractors that might put that in, we have no idea what's done on that site. So if it breaks on that end, unfortunately, that's a difficult situation. But that's really the landowners.
Which is understandable, but precedence from people in the past have had your help. So at least hearsay from him, he's saying he's been approached by other people that have the same issue. It was on their side, but the city either slipped the bill with them or covered the cost.
You know what I think might have happened, honestly? Is we did have a staff member at the time that was working with people and I don't know that he was, I don't think he was making it to council. I think he was doing it unilaterally and maybe that's where that comes from. But, so I don't know that that was a good practice, but it wasn't sanctioned by the council. I don't believe, or the city. I think it might have been just that one individual doing that, which is a charitable thing to do, but it's hard to apply that justly across the board with everyone. And so this is a perfect example of that.
Yep, so I think we need to know what the policy is. And if anybody comes forward later, I think they deserve the same answer.
Yeah.
You know, if that's, if that's the road you're going to take, then it needs to be across the board. I learned the word, or the term "small hill" this weekend from him. I wasn't aware of that, I'm not local, but it wasn't really a good term to learn.
Sure. Well, I hope that doesn't happen anymore and we do have, the time is, we've got to get moving with the meeting. But if you want to hang out or, and talk about further, we can do that after the meeting and.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, anybody else? Our 15 minutes is almost up. All right, seeing them, we'll move on to the next item. So we have the inland port authority resolution approval. Drew.
So this is a follow-up to the last meeting. Grant was asked to fill out the resolution, which he has reviewed for your consideration for adoption.
Yeah, it's broad, just saying that we're running through the inland port.
Any questions on that?
Yeah, I'm kind of more a fifth-class city. What's the definition?
It's by the number of residents.
Okay, I figured it was something like that. I think we're first-class most of the time.
I agree. But I didn't think that, well, there's a lot of things in common being a first-class city that we don't want any part of.
That's true, though. You're probably, in terms of the law, I'm just saying in terms of good people and stuff.
Yeah.
So, yeah, any questions on this resolution? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Yeah, I would move to approve. I don't have any questions.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilman Baird, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Wow, that was tough.
Well, we talked quite a bit last time, so that helped.
UB Tech contract discussion and decision, Alan Tucker and Mr. Bake.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, speaking to council. I have an update for you on the UB Tech contract. UB Tech wraps fulpen with President Wade and Justin Johnson, their business administrator. I'm not sure if that's his exact title. But they do acknowledge that they have received our counterproposal and the deadline is today, which as of five has passed. So the 90-day notice has been given to terminate the contract. However, we, when I say we, Mayor, myself, Lieutenant Tucker, are going to meet with multiple members from UB Tech tomorrow to discuss options that they are proposing. They understand that while we're in the 90-day period, there could be some renegotiating. But we will meet with them tomorrow and we'll bring that back to council, whatever comes from that meeting. So you'll have that to decide whether or not you want to accept what they're proposing or not, but.
And I would just say, kind of the last meeting that we had was a take it or leave it option, from what I remember from the council. And so just so you know, personally, I'm going to go into the meeting very strong on the proposal that we're already got and really not get, you know, go back and forth much in negotiating. We ran the numbers again today. We looked at, you know, every way, which way you look at it, we're within $3,000 to $5,000 probably of high or low where we should be. So we basically go where the 112 that we offered last time was right in the middle and a good offer. And so they can, in my opinion, unless the council feels differently, I'm going in to basically say and reinforce why we're at the 112 and not really entertain why we should come off at that price unless directed otherwise by the council, so.
I think 108 is what we put in, wasn't it?
112. Well, it was 108, but they didn't want to do the escalation clause?
Oh, and yeah, you're right.
I agree with you, Mayor. I think, but I think we need to be obviously open. If there's a proposal you feel that might warrant bringing back to council, obviously, yes, we'd want to consider that. But I agree, I think we've been fairly generous there. And the letter, I liked the wording of the letter that was sent to Aaron Wade on that. And so I feel like we're in a good place, so. Whoever wrote the letter, I thought it was really.
I thought it was great.
Yeah, I thought it was well-written. I thought it was good. That's why you go to law school, right? So you can write that stuff.
And I would just like to reiterate what Mayor said. We did the exact number, breaking it down with the top case, the bottom case, and if you average right in the middle, it hit 112 right off the bottom, so. It's, we're right where we're standing here.
And you don't need a motion on this because we already made the, so we're just waiting to hear if their counteroffer is worth considering. That's it, right? And we can rescind the 90 if that's the case?
Yeah, you can rescind the 90. And if you decide you want to accept one, we would have to rescind.
Okay, that's what I figured.
Yeah, for anything to change, it has to come back here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Main Street revitalization? Mr. Bake?
Come on, what's the bill?
I sat down, he's up.
Skipping out on.
So this is another update for council. I did meet with Councilman Goodrich and Councilman Boozmark about the SAG grant matching program. We have the structure in place, everything is ready to go. Met with Mayor and Grant and our recommendation is with the inland port right around the corner, with us drafting the, or approving the resolution tonight. If we start those two programs in conjunction, we will reap all the benefit from putting that program in place. And so while we do have all of that set, the grant is all set, that's why it's not on the agenda to approve tonight, but I will send that out to council so you'll have that, so you can look at it. And we can make it part of the inland port project. And then that money that we have allocated can be seed money to help that program get going. When we start the inland port, it will also give us ample opportunity to get out to the businesses, to advertise what we're doing, and then we can reap all the benefit from that. So that's where we're at tonight, as far as a council update where we're at. And again, three of the council here have seen the draft proposal, the SAG grant, the Councilman Allen, Councilman Baird, and Councilman White. I'll send that out later tonight so you can see the full structure. And Mr. Charles has worked on that in a contract that we would end and we'd do with those businesses as well. And when we send that out to you, please mark it up, give me feedback, if there seems that you would like to change. We want to make this a wonderful program for our community that can build over time and grow. So look at the, two of the big things, look at is the boundaries. Where do you want that area? And two, the amount and structure of what's included, what's allowed, what's not allowed. Mayor, want me to see it again, though?
No, I think that was. Any questions on that, brother? Councilman Goodrich, Councilman Boozmark, anything you'd do like that?
I, the only thing I was thinking is, I appreciated the, felt like it was very thoughtful in terms of what was allowed, what wasn't allowed, those kind of things. We weren't sure on the amount, so you might have a different opinion. We thought 10,000 was kind of the max to start with, but obviously that could come to council as an adjustment if we felt like it was worth, you know, but having a starting point. And then Councilman Goodrich also mentioned the homes on Highway 40. Then maybe we could have some grant to help maybe for them to zero-scape or to put lawn and sprinkler something to make it look a little nicer along Highway 40 there as well as part of that revitalization. Because I think that, I like that idea of helping them be able to do something as well to clean it up and make it look really nice.
And where would that at again?
That would be like from Strata down east.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, because there's a lot of homes there, but we'd still want that to be cleaned up and look nice for when people drive through, it's like, oh, I'd love to live in town. This is, you know, and some of those, I think, need a little attention and haven't had it in a while, so.
Yeah, and I think that was one of the things that we discussed is just making the area, especially in conjunction with inland port, making it a lot larger. Because then whatever area we designate, we'll get the tax increment, well, I shouldn't say incremental finance, we'll get the additional tax revenue coming in on, which is a larger plot of land, which then we can focus on smaller areas as well. But I think we go, with that, we go a little bigger in our scope.
And I do apologize, Councilman Boozmark, Councilman Goodrich. I will send you the updated ones as well. Send it to everybody else. You will get the updated ones, could be edits.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Austin. Next one, fraud risk assessment before.
So this, I go over every year, we have to submit this to the state. The state has a due out fraud risk assessment where we evaluate the city on our services, what we have, if we have certain policies in place. And we score ourselves and it gives us a potential risk level of where we're at. So after adding all these up, the city comes up with a 335 out of 395 score. And that puts us in the low-risk category. Very low would be 355 or higher. Some of the big things we are missing is, do we have a CPA on staff? Most cities our size do not have CPAs, moves 20 points right there. But as you see, most of these, we scored very well on, we've been doing a really good job. You know, you're scoring fairly high on this. So this, we'd like to present to council for approval and then we will send it off to the state.
Can I ask a question on this really quickly?
You bet.
Well, two things. Does the entity have a formal audit committee? And couldn't we make a formal audit committee that was part, because we have our CPAs that we work with? And then just a few of the budget, like you and a couple of the council people that are invited to that finance committee, I mean, couldn't that be the audit committee? Or how does that, did you look into that to see?
Yes, and we absolutely can, that's a wonderful idea and great recommendation, too, dude.
Yeah, I agree. Also, just, you have the alphabet soup, three CPA, CGFM. Is there, like, is there potential for someone if we send them to some classes or something? Or, I don't know.
Yeah, so this year, and I'm not sure which ones, but since none of us are having yet, Zeke is getting two certifications, I'm getting one, and Taylor's getting one. So I'm not sure which ones that we are signed up to get, but I will see if it does match one of those.
Okay.
But we do want to make sure we have those certifications.
Right.
And I appreciate the question because when I was looking at that, it says, as part of its management team, if we contract with, do we have a contract with ACOG and Miles? Or if we contract with ACOG and Miles, does that count as then being part of our management team? Kind of like Grant's part of our legal team, but he's not technically a full-time employee?
The auditors have to be independent, so it could be part of our management team.
Okay.
So some cities do contract with separate auditors to help internally. So when they get to the audit, so we could do that with another auditing firm, but ACOG and Miles has to stay independent.
So we, but we could technically add an accountant, not ACOG and Miles, under some type of an hourly contract or something. And then how, yeah. I'm just curious, because we don't want to hire a person if you can get the certificate, it's fine. But I think, I don't know how important that is, but I think that's an easy one to.
Any protection we can get is better for the city. I mean, wherever we're at, we're at low risk, we're in a great place, but if we can get very low, even better.
Yeah, when I first came on the council, we were like 275 or 255, something like that, it seems. And so to be where we're at, I'm glad. But I would like to see if there's a way we could work something out to move that just a little more.
Yep, I'll absolutely agree with you on that. And I will try to have an update on which certifications we're getting. Like I said, between the three of us, we'll have four certifications in the next year. Assuming we outpass our examples.
Mayor, I would move, we approve the fraud risk assessment presented by Mr. Bake.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Seconded by Councilman Allen, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right, Aaron, you're up, my friend.
Mayor, council, it is time to renew some leases on the equipment at the golf course. So we're looking at the golf carts that we currently lease, as well as the maintenance equipment, such as mowers, utility carts, things like that. We've been, for the last couple of months, reaching out to various companies, looking at bids, contacting other golf courses that use some of this equipment, really trying to do our due diligence in finding out what's going to be best for our golf course and city. With that being said, these bids are all state contract pricing and it's recommended that, right now you're looking at the golf cart lease. It's recommended that we go with club cart. Again, that's currently what we use. Their bid came in a little bit lower than Easy Go. And we're also adding, proposing to add an additional 15 golf carts to get our fleet to 60. Our numbers, the last few years have been going up in golf cart rentals. We're a little over 20% in those and we're frequently, right now, running out of golf carts on the weekends and holidays, so.
That's a good thing.
It's a.
What do you mean, you're 20%? What is that?
Our rentals, like.
They're out of 20%?
Yeah, we're 20% on lease, our renting goes out. So having 15 more will be very beneficial going forward. Hopefully get us through our busy times and the big tournaments that need them. They currently have to rent them. This should eliminate some of those tournaments that need to rent them.
And this falls within the budget, would you plan?
It does. Another thing I'd like to point out on these is we are looking at getting cart control added to these. So that will allow us to actually monitor the golf carts better. And we'll be able to see that in real-time on a screen in the golf shop and tell where those carts are at. It will also allow us to set up a geo-fence so we can control where those golf carts are going, which will really cut down on some of the riff rack that we experience.
Is this perimeter, is that like, make sure they stay in path?
Yeah, we can. We can set them up to where they will stay wherever we want and they won't go. As soon as you go into an area, it will beep at you and it will not go forward until you reverse out of that area.
That's awesome.
So that did increase prices. It's probably about, if I remember right, 10,000 to 12,000 a year for that module, but it will definitely pay for seven.
And the whole fleet?
Yeah. Yep. So that's the proposal on the golf cart lease.
Okay.
Do you need separate motions or can we do them all as one?
That's what I was wondering, do you have more? Well, I'll leave that up to the council. Do you want to approve them all at once or?
I think we approve them all at once, if we can see the John Deere, the mowers and stuff.
Okay, so this is an annual payment for John Deere. We currently have John Deere equipment. The annual payment is 46,943, and that is in the budget. The other bid we had was from Rocky Mountain turf equipment. And that bid came in at $40,755. So a little, little less than what John Deere is. However, we are proposing to buy out some of the current equipment that we have. It's still in good shape. The staff knows how to operate it and maintain it. And so instead of trying to lease those pieces of equipment for another five years or getting brand-new ones, we're proposing to. We're proposing to buy those out. And that buyout paper is in there. You can click.
Is this it or?
So that's, yeah, so that's the buyout package from RMT. And it comes in at fifty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars for that buyout package. And then the John Deere package for the same equipment comes out to be twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred. So it's twenty thousand, twenty thousand dollar difference. So even though their, their annual bid is six thousand less, in the long run, we're still better off going with John Deere because of the buyout. Yeah, there's the, the John Deere buyout. It's quite a bit cheaper to go that route. We are familiar with that equipment. They've been a great company to work with. And the staff, I think more importantly, is, is comfortable with that equipment and familiar with it. So that's our recommendation is to buy, do the John Deere buyout at twenty-eight, nine. And that is in the budget as well. And then to renew a five-year lease on the John Deere equipment at forty-six. And these are all five-year leases.
So this buyout is the end of the five-year lease with that specific equipment there.
Driven, yeah.
So this give you extra equipment so you'll always have enough for doing what you need around there?
It will, yeah. This will actually provide us with an extra green mower. And those are constantly used daily and so they actually go down and have issues with those. It will provide us with another fairway mower, as well as a collar mower, which mows the tees and around the greens. So this will give us a few extra pieces of equipment that we're really looking forward to having.
Great. And golf maintenance equipment is that part of this, right? And so I'm just looking at these and see how it coincides with everything. Am I missing anything or we covered it all?
Yeah, we covered it all. Yeah, the two leases and then the buyout. The golf cart lease, the golf maintenance lease, and then another buyout.
Okay.
Since, since they have money in their budget, I would move we approve the golf carts, the buyout and the lease, John Deere lease that's recommended by Aaron. So do I get them all?
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, second by Councilman Barrett. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, too. All right, I think the financial rules went down. Any questions on those?
I don't know. I didn't have any. I move we approve.
Okay, I'm just working on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Basically, manager report?
First, I think I want to excuse Zeke tonight. He will have an in-depth financial review for council in the next council meeting. So he didn't want me to pass out on him. Also, I just want to publicly thank the Rotary Club. They planted twenty trees up at the walking park. Did a great job up there, so hopefully no wind comes and blows them down. Dustin's guaranteeing that's the only habit. Thank the Rotary, Rotary Club for that. Also, I am sending out monthly, or not monthly, well, yeah, monthly reports from departments for city council. So every month you will have a department come before you in council meeting and give you an update where you can ask them specific questions. They will highlight what they're doing within that month, with the exception of May, June, November and December, because of the holidays and because of budget season. But other than that, we have our other eight departments that will be giving those monthly reports. So if there's, I will get you a calendar of when they are coming. But if you have something, say in recreation, you have specific questions on, please get that to me. I can get it to the department so they can be prepared. Otherwise, they will just kind of do a general report on what is going on in their department. I think it's good for you to have that interaction and update from the departments themselves. And then lastly, I would like, I'm really excited to announce that we will have two new interns coming onto the city. One high school student and one college student. So this is exciting that we'll have those two, two different individuals helping with the city. So if you see some new faces, please welcome them. Let them know who you are and we should have a great opportunity. The younger of the high school one, he's more interested in law, so we're going to give him some research projects. And the college one is more interested in finance, so we have some financial projects planned with Zeke that he can work on that and doing some long-term projections for the city on our financial wellbeing. Are there any questions for me?
Just thanks for all you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Community reports. Do you have anything for us?
I don't.
Councilman Barrett?
No.
Councilman Goodrich? I think, I don't know if that came up in council meeting. I think it did. Uh, but the award for the gun range and so rocking and rolling on that. Have you heard anything on that since?
On the grant itself?
Yeah, when that, when the funding will be available.
We haven't heard anything from Gary yet, but Jones and the Mail is currently working on getting the project dialed in to where we can get it ready to bid out, so that should be on our next council agenda.
Perfect. All right, any items for future discussion?
I don't know what I can think of.
Seeing, yeah, just on your radar, the audit will be presented as of right now, first meeting in October. Assuming it works for ACOG and Miles, but we want to get an audit presentation for council.
Great. We do have a reason to go into closed session for property acquisition. And so need a motion for that. And then we'll do, let's say, a five-minute recess and then we'll go into that closed session if that works. But do we have a motion to go into closed session?
I have moved to go into closed session to discuss property acquisition. And then when we come out of closed session, we stand adjourned.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a sec? Well, yeah, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Councilman Uzi Goodrich, I will call both. Councilman, please work.
Oh, good question. I didn't know.
Aaron, it's on the agenda to switch it to action.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Thank you, Sierra, for keeping it straight.
Thank you. Aye.
Councilman Barrett?
Aye.
Councilman Goodrich?
Aye.
Councilman Allen? Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and do quick five-minute recess and then.